If it goes, what do we talk to them?
No, that's contracted at that level.
Okay.
We're contracted at that level. We will spend that much by year end. We have another couple of months to pay for.
Okay.
I think we have the November and December billings to pay for yet for that. So we'll be right on budget for this year for that. Keep rolling.
Sure.
Down to facility stuff in the 120s. The line 124, we're moving the mowing of our fields into the rec budget, which is, you know, we're now trying to treat it like the parks and rent budget. So you'll, you'll see a new line item down there to pick up athletic field mowing, Marston and that kind of stuff. So we're taking it out here and moving it down there. What else is different? The, the community center kitchen renovation is not in the budget. We, we are prepared to put it in a separate word article or to plug it in here if you wish, but that's still on your wish list, not shown here. On the next page, in the 130, starting at 134, the electric, the electric billing continues to confound me to fit these, with the solar panels, the way the billing works to fit it into the various budget lines is a complete nightmare. We're going to end up paying a little bit less if you add them all together. But getting it, getting it budgeted, the way it actually happens each year has been really challenging. But we've got enough budgeted and we'll end up taking a little bit out of that. Good place to remind you that in 2024, we're going to have the opportunity to buy those solar panels. And it will make financial sense to do so, given what we'll be paying for the electricity. So we're going to want to have 130,000 ready to go four years from now for that. That's in the CIP stuff that we've had for years, but it's the kind of thing I get, can get forgotten. Line 147, you'll recall, we put, we got rid of the waste oil burner in the highway shed this year and replaced it with propane. This is a guess at what, what the incremental fuel cost is going to be. It's obviously weather dependent. Interestingly, just last weekend, the waste oil furnace at the town of Hollis Highway Garage exploded. Nobody got hurt, but made quite a mess. So I'm glad we don't have that anymore. Line 149, we also replaced the old oil furnace in the community center with newer, higher efficiency ones. We're also guessing here at what that might save us. You know, with a, with a full year, I, it might be better than this, but anticipating some savings there. But we won't really have a grip on that until we get a full year behind us. Lines 152 and 153, another one of those budget crazy things with the vendor. Everything's with Comcast now, phone and internet. Getting the, getting the costs lined up to the exact right line item with 30 different phone and internet line items in this budget has been a struggle for us. So I'm going to combine those into one, one line and be done with that nonsense. That's it on facility related stuff. I'm going to keep going until somebody tells me not to. Cemeteries, this is the same amount we budget every year for mowing. They've also asked for road reconstruction on the South Side Cemetery. Sean gave them an estimate of about 13,000 for that. We don't have that in the budget. But you may want to come back and discuss that either here in the budget or in, in a different warrant article. If you've driven through South Side Cemetery, you'll, you'll understand the need. It's been on the wishlist for a long time. Insurance, we're seeing increases in property and liability. Workers' comp, workers' comp bounces around a little bit. It trails our actual payroll and it's got some claim drivers in it. So it, it bounces around, but these are, these are hard numbers now. We know what, what the 2021 numbers are going to be and they, they don't change once we get them locked in here. So. All right, keep going. Police. The salary line on the police is, was an estimate from a month or so ago. We'll tweak that based on our actual staffing at year end, when we get through the hiring process and we get before the last round of the budget. We also have an officer being deployed with their army reserve. We've got another, another one starting in the academy, I believe in January. So we're going to, we're going to tweak this number again. It, it won't change dramatically, but we'll, we'll fine tune it and get it a little more accurate. On the next page, you keep it up with me, Tony. Nothing out of the ordinary here. Our cruiser, we, we, we're not showing on line 192, we're not showing cost for the cruiser because it isn't here yet, but it will be shortly. The 2020 cruiser has been ordered. I think we even have the VIN number. It's, it's real close and we're going to pay for that. As well as all the equipment that has to go in it. That's line 185 that you'll see is well underspent this year because we haven't done that work yet. If we don't finish the work, I'll ask you to encumber that at the end of December. That is the transition of our last Taurus to Explorer. And we have an Explorer in the budget for 21 as well.
That trade in value, I don't think that's accurate, is it?
That's probably high now that we're six months later. No, that's, that's, that's on the, that's on an Explorer next year. That's not on the, that's not on this year's trade in. It's on next year's trade in. Okay. So that's, that's, that's a younger number. That's, that should be a decent number. But we, we will have in a month, we'll have four explorers and we'll start rotating explorers rather than having a Taurus in the mix. The trade in value on that must be higher than, than a Taurus. Anything else? All right, fire. Fire, we're still trying to staff fully. He's with the, with the shortages, we end up using, you know, and being without, we end up using more overtime. I think that's the chief's thinking here on line 195. The actuals in line 196, you see are, are way over for this year. That includes the special stipend for first responders that the governor doled out early in the pandemic. So that's why that number is so far out of whack that that won't happen again this year. That also happened in the police full time line to a lesser extent, but it's, it's there as well.
There's offsetting revenue for that somewhere?
Yes. Yeah. And the, the stipends were for in line 198, those are paid out in early December or late November. It looks like it's going to be early December this year. So they're not shown, they're not reflected. That's the stipends for our call firefighters that are paid on an annual basis. And the chief has got little else of interest on the next page. The line 216, that comes back down. We're, we had budgeted to replace a hydrant this year, which we didn't actually do the work, but I believe he's going to buy the materials this year and do it in the spring of 21. So they, that line can come back down a little bit.
It's gone?
Okay. So I'm not the only one not hearing.
Yeah, it's like he just faded away into the nothingness. You still there, Chris?
You got really, you got really low, Chris, really much quieter, your audio.
Nothing's changed.
Turn up your volume. Can't hear you at all now.
Those lips aren't moving.
I yell, can you hear me?
Barely.
Barely.
Chris, mute your computer, but dial in on the phone.
Yeah, why don't you try to leave and come back, Chris? Yes. Cause you know, restart, reboot, fix it.
Have you tried rebooting?
Come on, Tony, that's the first thing you say, right? On your computer.
Very often, yeah. It works. Should I let him in? Okay, I'll let him in. Where is it? There, Chris?
Well done, Tony.
Anything? Can you hear me? Can you see me?
You're still very faint.
Okay. I'm going to call.
Yeah, let's say just mute your computer, keep your video up. So you can see the, you know, see the spreadsheet and just dial in on your phone.
The awkward silence.
There he is.
How's that?
Better.
Much better. Okay.
You're going to want to.
Spectative echo for me. Yeah. Mute your computer, otherwise you're going to get an echo feedback. Yeah, I think I got it now. Okay. Yeah, it's better. All right. Sorry. I don't know what's going on, but we left off in fire. Were there any questions on fire? All right, building inspection is next. We've got, we, we're keeping up barely. We've, we've snuck some administrative help in for, for Dale this year to keep up with the paperwork side of things. And, you know, he's working almost a full schedule with, with COVID and everything. But we're anticipating another busy year next year. He would appreciate some administrative help for the paperwork side of things. And we've budgeted just a little bit for that. Always, always keep busy when we've got somebody that's really good at, at that. And is always quite busy filing and doing the data entry for permitting and inspection. So we'd like to keep that up. And we've actually been doing it all along and just finding money. But we'd like to bake it into the budget. As it says here, we, we've, we've got subdivisions brewing. They won't all finish in time to be constructed next year, but there, there's a pretty good chance we're going to have good num, big numbers of new construction. So anticipating a busy year there. And let's see, moving on, emergency management, no changes there. Fire, we did public works last week. If there's anything you want to go back to, we can, but I don't see or hear anything. The, the, the big, the big mover is, is disposal fees. That's really a guess, depending on what we're going to be doing with a couple of materials like cardboard and how long the pandemic keeps our, our processes mucked up. That, that number, we won't miss going over that number at 165, I don't think. We might come in under if, if we're able to return to something like normal earlier in the year. But this is admittedly a bit of a guess here.
What line was that, Chris?
280.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Back on highway, just do me a favor and remember to update the explanation online, 869, please.
Yeah, yeah, I, I've got to go back and work on this before the budget committee gets it. So we'll, we'll take the plugs out.
Yeah. Have a 600% increase as of a plug.
Yeah. Yeah, the, and then so I'm going to keep moving. Next page, welfare unchanged. Again, we, we, we've not had a big, a big hit really here in pandemic related services. I think economically, we're not out of the woods yet, obviously. So we may see some more. You see a, a big overage on the mortgage and rent assistance line. Everything else has been uneventful. So in total, we're, we're going to be fine. You never really know where the need is going to be within these lines. So I think we're okay there. The social service agencies, this is just what we did last year. We're still compiling requests and I haven't had a chance to talk with the welfare director, not the administrator about each of these yet. We may tweak them a little bit, but I, I would anticipate we propose they stay pretty similar to what they have been historically. I'm going to keep moving, recreation. So you talked with Courtney, I don't know, six weeks ago now, I've kind of lost track. Some programmatic and budget changes that we discussed. One is the beach staffing. What, what she has proposed here is to take the Monday through Friday beach lifeguards out of the budget and not staff those nine to five as, as we have. And only to staff lifeguard positions when the summer camp is at the beach and leave it unguarded as it was this year. Seven days a week, other than when summer camp is there. So we'll have lifeguards there with summer camp when we need them, otherwise not. And that was a, that was something we, you had talked about with her before and seemed relatively comfortable with. We can revisit it. We have a hard time staffing those positions. We are not wage competitive. And everybody, I mean, the state park doesn't even have lifeguards most of the time. And we have not been able to staff on weekends for a very long time. I don't know if we ever have in my time here. When the beach is probably busier. So that's the thinking there. And then line 332 is the new line item that I had mentioned. That is a combination of our existing mowing, additional funds to mow Marston and about 3,000 to work on the beach itself with clearing, turning the sand. Something else that you would talk about was kind of rejuvenating the beach and seeing if we can recapture some of the space and as well as winterize the, or tighten up the shed that they have down there. So those, the maintenance and mowing will, will capture that in that line item. Again, nothing on the, you often think of the community center kitchen as a rec thing. We don't have anything in the budget for that. Next page, unless you stop me, library. This is direct from the library, what they, what they asked for. No big changes there. You can see they're well underspent this year on payroll. It's for obvious reasons. We're going to, we have some year end money. We're doing a little extra maintenance there for them, catching up on a couple of things that they've been wanting to do. We're going to do those this month, painting downstairs and a couple of other small things, but they're otherwise report that they are in good shape. And I think they're, they're essentially staffed. They just don't have enough, they're just not open enough to meet all the people that they have had in the past. Historical conservation, the conservation commission line 351 and down, this is all straight from them, minor changes. And then debt service, as you know, our, our payments are, they, they dwindle a little bit every year with fixed principal and declining interest. So we, we come down a little bit every year on those. That's reflected in the default budget as well. So you add it all up for this draft, up to 4.23 million or up 82,000 or 2%. I think I touched on some of the things that may change in between here and the final draft, but nothing drastic unless you tell us to do something drastic. We have pretty good visibility on, on most things at this point. And that's where we sit. We go to the budget committee with this draft on Thursday and go back to them in early January with a final. Okay. Questions, comments?
Since our expenditure this year right now, as of this draft here was 3,312,000. How much more before we finish up the year? Are we going to finish up the year at $4 million, 4,146?
We are going to be well short. We are going to, we are going to finish well under, hundreds of thousands under. We have a month of payroll. We have some road projects and a month of benefits and a police cruiser and some relatively small stuff. So I didn't, I didn't carry it out to a great level of detail, but it would not surprise me if we finished with four to 500,000 in surplus overall.
Chris, how much of that is pandemic driven?
I guess maybe half. I, I, you know, that, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of vacancies. And the, the changes in the highway plan around Ledge Farm that we made mid-year. You know, we'll, we'll end up underspent on the, on the road maintenance line. So that's, that's pandemic related. And, but it's, it, it well, well below budget in ways that we have not been probably ever.
Not that I've ever seen.
Yeah. We'll have, we're doing a little bit of, you know, like I said, we're, we're doing some painting at the library and, and picking up some things that we might be able to pull out of this budget. We don't, we don't have a lot in the 2021 budget that we can do in advance. You know, you often see us late in the year. If we feel like we're going to have some room, come back to you and say, hey, if we buy this now, we can take it out of the budget for 21. We're doing that exercise, but we really don't have a lot in this 2021 budget that we could do ahead of time. So we're, we're trying to do a little bit of that, but you'll have, as you get into your late discussions, you, you may want to talk about using fund balance for some things. If, if you're so inclined, your, your fund balance is going to jump quite a bit after this year.
So let me just throw this out there if, you know, to the board members, if we're going to come in that much under, is the, and I guess it's for you two, Chris, is doing something like the kitchen too big of a thing or too big of a question to pull into what we've got left for this budget year?
Dollar wise, it's not too big, but we, we could not get a, we couldn't get a good bid process done in time to get under contract for it.
Got it. Okay. Got it.
A, a similar, a similar action would be to put it as a standalone warrant article to be paid for by fund balance.
Got it. Okay.
Same, same net effect. It would be the voters choosing to do it instead of the board, but the, the net effect would be the same.
I got it. Cause it was, it would essentially still come out of what we, the surplus that we have this year, but it's because it's being added to the fund balance.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Other questions?
No, I don't have any. It's pretty conservative. So I'm happy with it.
Okay.
So there's a question in the chat that came to me, but I'll throw it out to the board. Benefit, it's not the right time. Please tell me. Could you please restate how the new road standards that have passed tonight impacts existing roads like Barter Lane, short term and long term as it relates to maintenance? Thank you. That's, question is posed by Dave Dearborn.
Chris, you want to answer that? The new, it has nothing to do with maintenance. There, there's no, no impact on, on maintenance at all. This is all about what happens when a road is reconstructed or accepted. So there, there's no, no change in the approach to maintenance because of that policy. I hope that answers Mr. Dearborn's question. Were there any others? Don, I can't see anything.
Well, he sent it to me privately and said, said it to everybody. And the follow up question that he has is how do you think it could impact the road overall beyond maintenance? Which I'm not quite sure what he means by that, but. Dave, if you want to unmute yourself or Tony, if you want to unmute him, perhaps he can ask the question directly.
He, he can unmute himself.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Please, just, just to clarify, I didn't know if that new standard for roads would impact any existing roads in any way, shape or form. And if you can elaborate on how you think that it might impact these roads. you guys are the experts. I'm just curious to know how it might in some way, shape, or form.
Who wants to tackle that one?
I think Chris already explained that it, it only comes into effect if the road, if the existing road is re-engineered, but it doesn't, it doesn't have any effect on regularly scheduled maintenance. 'Cause these are construction standards. They're not maintenance standards.
Right, and, and Donna made a point earlier to state that it does not affect the ELS. That, is that correct, Donna?
I- i- it doesn't impact the maintenance as is being conducted now for the ELS. Nothing is going to change on the ELS pending the outcome of the lawsuit.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Dearborn?
Um, I'm not sure. I'll give it some more thought. If I have anything else, I'll get back. Thank you, though. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir. Any other questions or comments?
I got a question. What if the, uh, the lawsuit wins and the town has to accept the, uh, ELS as roads? Because we have this new thing here, um, are, is the town liable to spend all that money upgrading all those roads to that standard?
No. No, that's what the waiver's for at the, at the very end. Uh, and I, I mean, the court could order all kinds of things, but, uh, it would seem unlikely that the, the court would go beyond the request of the petitioner, so politically that could happen. But legally, it, it, it wouldn't because of this policy.
Chris, there was another question about re-engineering and what the, the meaning behind that, that word was. Uh, wha- 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 what were you, were you trying to capture in that so that clear understanding?
Um, well, we, we, we use the word reconstruction, um, you know, the, um, that in, I think in how we typically use it is, uh, involves, um, not just, uh, recovering the surface of a road, but changing the geometry of a road or the substructure of a road. Um, when, as we, as we have reconstructed roads in the past, that has mean, meant, um, you know, the, at, at the very least, digging down and, and working on, on subsurface materials, um, and at, at the greater extent like Ledge Farm, we just finished, you know, full-blown engineering and changing the geometry of the road. So I, I guess those were, tho- that's the best I can give you in terms of reconstruction. It doesn't affect filling potholes or, um, even an overlay of, of an existing classified asphalt road. I, I wouldn't, uh, interpret this to affect that.
So if it's already a town road and it doesn't meet these standards, are we, again, we have the waiver, I understand that, but if, if the people of that road petition, do we have to bring it up to that standard?
Petition.
No, you.
Well, say they want the road up to the, now the new standard, and their road doesn't meet it, and it is a town road.
Well, you, you cou- you couldn't stop somebody from suing you for something. You, that, that happens all, you know, that, that's not controllable, but, um, the, the, the intention would be that the, those standards would guide the redesign or re-engineering of a road. And it, that's why it says in the, in the preamble of the thing, that's what it's intended to cover, you know?
Any other questions? Okay. Guess we can roll right on to the next one. If you wanna put the agenda back up, uh, Tony, but I think that takes care of the budget. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, is there, what else, uh, board, what else do you want in terms of the budget? Do you wanna see any department heads? Do you wanna just do, uh, a next draft before we go back to the budget committee? Wh- what's your pleasure? You want, you wanted to see the town clerk. We, we divined that from that conversation. Is there anything else you'd like to do before we uh, move through the budget committee process?
I, I can't think of anything. Everything seems to be pretty straightforward. I mean, i- 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 if any department's gonna put up a warrant article, I, I would be interested in, in talking more with the, the department head, uh, in regards to that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but.
No, I, I agree, and I think that this, uh, draft is, um, good to stick to the budget committee.
Yeah, I agree too. We wanna have a deeper conversation about, um, our ideas for fund balance, but that's, that's outside of this. Okay, and you, you know, we, we've, we've talked, uh, road reconstruction, dump truck, a loader, um, community center kitchen, but those are all, at this point, intended to be warrant articles, um, so perhaps the mezzanine at the fire station, um.
Can we see a list of them?
Yeah, you have, you have that from the first draft that you got of this budget, but I'll send it back to you, um.
Okay.
And all the, the recurring ones that we
Yeah.
typically have.
Yeah.
Chris? Can you hear me, Chris?
Yep.
Uh, can you refresh my memory what the capital reserve fund is in the highway department?
Uh, it's at one forty, one fifty right now, I think one fifty.
All right, so still not enough to cover either one of the, uh, items that the highway department wants?
Now, we, we envisioned adding a hundred to the, to it like we do every year, uh, and then using it to cover the cost of the dump trucks. Uh, you know, add, add a hundred and then empty the, and then empty the account, basically, um.
Well, which cost, for the loader or the dump truck?
The dump truck is two forty, the loader's about one eighty. And we had envisioned the loader being a lease purchase arrangement, so it'd be spread over five years or so and become part of the operating budget.
Okay. I remember now. Thank you.
That, that's something you may, you might also wanna think about for fund balance. I, I don't know.
Okay.
And then one other, uh, one of the subjects that we, we don't have to do tonight, but I would like to take your temperature on budget-wise, uh, is, um, the E nine one one addressing standards. Um, we touched on it, I don't know, six or eight weeks ago. I sent you the, uh, the list of problems, um, around that. Um, are, are you at all interested in pursuing that next year? I need to know if, if I need to figure out how much it's gonna cost to do it. Um, it's probably ten or twenty grand by the time you get done with all the administrative work and other stuff, but, um, i- is that something that's, that is worth us putting time into discussing? It's something that the staff has recommended and we put off this year, but I've never really taken to your temperature about it. Um, it's never a popular thing, but it's a big safety improvement.
Well, I mean, safety is a big thing in town, especially, uh, the size of the town. We wanna make sure responding units get to the correct address and, and so on. Um, I mean, this could be taken out of fund balance, correct?
Yeah, if you just, it depends on how you wanna propose it to the voters, uh.
Right. What does everybody else feel about it?
Um, I need to revisit that. Chris, when did you send it?
I, I don't remember. I'll, I'll send it again. It's, it's all old stuff.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's, it's all from, from the state, and it, it was a detailed list of all the roads, uh, that don't meet the standard and how the, you know, the, there's hundreds and hundreds of locations that need new street numbers and uh, a number of roads that need to either get their own name for a change or be renamed, uh, you know, uh, there, there's a bunch. Uh, you, you may have looked through it, you may not have, but I'll resend it.
Thank you. I think that was a while ago, so I, I think that should be on an upcoming, um, agenda.
Works for me.
All right, anybody else you wanna see on those subjects that we just went through?
I don't have any.
No, me neither.
So, Chris, no, I, I was just gonna say on the budget overall, um, I think, I think it's a good budget. I think it, uh, you did a good job putting it together. I think a two percent increase is, um, you know, reasonable. I think that the BOS has always done a good job trying to maintain, you know, a reasonable, uh, budget. And so I feel pretty good about what we've got here with the two percent increase.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. What do we, what do we wanna review for the next, uh, actual items for the next board meeting?
I have town clerk to visit BOS, any department head who will have a warrant article to visit BOS, and the E nine one one.
Okay.
So just, so just the department heads with warrant articles, what I think would be, uh, efficient is if that we see the list from Chris first and then decide if we wanna talk with the department heads again or not. Unless you guys disagree.
No, I think that's fine. I mean, the stuff like for the fire department, we've already heard from the chief on that, um, so we, you know, we won't need to see him again, but, um, there might be others that we should see. The only other thing I would add is just to put some thought into what we might wanna do with fund balance.
Yeah, I agree.
As a homework item. All right, uh, there, we do have, uh, stuff for non-public, right, Chris?
Uh, I believe you have something under B, hiring.
Yep.
If that's correct, then yes, you do. I, I don't have anything new for you.
Okay.
Before you leave, could anybody explain fund balance to everyone?
Uh, fun, fun ba- we, eh, well, it's, it, it goes by a lot of names, um, the undesignated fund balance, the unassigned fund balance, fund balance. Um, it is what happens with surplus monies at the end of every year fall to the fund balance. And, uh, if, um, if the voters decide they wanna do something with it, or if the select board decides they wanna propose something to the voters with it, um, it can be spent on other things, uh, or the select board can use that fund balance to reduce taxes at the time of tax rate setting in the fall. Uh, that same, that same amount of money is our operating cash, so it's what we use to hold ourselves over between tax billings generally.
So.
With both our rainy day account and our operating checking account.
Yeah, I would just point out what Chris just said. It, it's also kind of, one of the names it goes by is, uh, rainy day fund. And, uh, the state has guidelines that they recommend for, you know, what the percentage of that account should be, and I, I forget what their range is, like eight to ten percent or something like that, or eight, eight to fifteen, and we, we use that as a guideline for what percentage that rainy day fund should be.
Thank you.
Okay, if there isn't any other questions or comments, uh, motion to enter, uh, non-public or?
I'll make a motion we entered non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, two, B.
Second that. Motion in a, in a second. All in favor? I've been Bartlett.
Hi, Donna Dumas.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Warren.
Okay. Good night, Nottingham. Thank you.